I apologize for the delay due to technical difficulties, but we are going to get started. Welcome to the first meeting of the 2021 Carmel Clay School Board. Thank you all for joining us. We have a full house based upon COVID conditions, but we are under the COVID guidelines. Thank you for all being here. I'm all flustered here. Roll call, Madam Vice President, please.
All board members are present.
Thank you. We will be led in the pledge by Judge Bardock. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was looking forward to start this meeting by congratulating some of our student athletes, but for safety reasons, we've decided not to have them join us. As we continue to deal with the pandemic, I want to once again, on behalf of the board, thank everyone who has worked so hard to get us through the first semester and the first week of the second semester. To say these last nine months have been challenging would be an understatement. I will continue to start our meetings with thanks and words of encouragement. But for this first meeting of the year, I'd like to recognize that we've lost members of our CCS family during this pandemic. So please join us in a moment of silence to recognize those from the CCS family lost in 2020. Again, thank you to our teachers, administrators, staff, and families for what they do every day for our students. As I have said before, we are better together. Together we achieve, and we are the best at getting better. As we reorganize our board officers this evening, I just wanted to say it has been my honor and privilege to serve as this board's president for the last two years. I am excited that the first item on our agenda this evening is a swearing in of two board members, one new and one who's been with us. And I'd like to thank and welcome Judge Gail Bardock to administer the oath of office to Katie Browning and Louise Jackson. Judge Bardock.
All right, we're going to start this by you saying your names after I say the word "I," or the pronoun "I," to be more specific. "I."
"I."
"I." State your name.
Louise Jackson.
Katie Browning.
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
of the United States of America.
of the United States of America.
the Constitution of the state of Indiana.
the Constitution of the state of Indiana.
and the laws of the United States.
and the laws of the United States.
and the state of Indiana.
and the state of Indiana.
I will faithfully execute the duties of my office.
I will faithfully execute the duties of my office.
as a member of the Carmel Clay School Board.
as a member of the Carmel Clay School Board.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Judge Bardock, and congratulations. I think we're going to just pause for a moment for photographs. We can do however they want. Thank you again. The next item on the agenda is election of officers for 2021. And I will make a recommendation slate, a recommended slate. I move to approve the following slate of officers for 2021 for Carmel Clay School Board. President Leila Spanenberg, Vice President Katie Browning, Secretary Pam Nalls. May I have a second to that motion? Thank you, Pam. Any discussion? Katie.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Kirschner, if the vote passes, I want to appreciate you for the last two years and serving under you as president. So thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other discussion? That being said, we recall the question. All in favor of approving the proposed slate of officers? Please signify by saying "aye" and raising your hand. "Aye." All were in favor. Motion carries. Congratulations, Mrs. Spanenberg. You know, I'll wipe this off for you. Thank you.
And Mike, before I continue with the meeting, I would like to first thank you for your steadfast leadership of our Carmel Clay School Board these past two years. We appreciate you, your time, your energy that you've really put forth as president. You've brought new ideas to the board meetings, and they've been very refreshing and very thoughtful. And as we switch roles, I'll do my very best to build on all the ideas that you have brought forth in serving our community. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
And congratulations to Katie and Louise. We are thrilled that you're joining us. Katie, we are very excited to have you continue in your leadership role on the board. And Louise, we are equally excited to have you join leadership here on the board. It's going to be a fabulous 2021, so thank you, the entire team. So yay! And moving right along, as what Mr. Kirschner had said, tonight's meeting with reorganization also includes several appointments. And for our appointments this evening, because Dr. Beresford is unable to be with us tonight, Dr. Amy Dudley is going to be working with the team to work to, with our appointments. And our first appointment is the appointment of our treasurer, deputy treasurer, approval of bonds for the treasurer, deputy treasurer, and the extracurricular treasurers and the cafeteria cashiers. Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. Each year, it is necessary for the board to appoint a treasurer and a deputy treasurer within the first 15 days of January. The administration recommends the board appoint Mr. Roger McMichael as treasurer and Mrs. Cara Colrose as deputy treasurer. Further, it is recommended the board approve continuation of bonds as follows. Treasurer $100,000, deputy treasurer $100,000. Carmel High School ECA treasurer $50,000. Each middle school ECA treasurer $20,000. Each elementary school treasurer $10,000. Each cafeteria cashier $10,000. And Educational Services Center ECA treasurer $10,000.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. May I get a motion on the table? Second.
Second.
Discussion? Yes, Katie.
Can you, Dr. Dudley or Mr. McMichael, explain what the bond is in reference to, please? I like to ask that every time.
No, it's not salary. It really has to do with the, it's kind of driven by the, potentially the amount of cash that the employee can handle. So at the district level, for example, we have, we deal with lots of money, but very little cash. And where is it at a school, in a cafeteria, for example, in the extracurricular accounts? They're, they're, they're more likely to handle, you know, cash and checks. So, still need to get closer, right? So, and these amounts, by the way, are recommended to us. They have been recommended to us by the Board of Accounts.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for either Dr. Dudley or Ms. McMichael? Okay, hearing none, we will go ahead with our vote. Motion on the table is to authorize Mr. McMichael as treasurer, Ms. Cara Colrose as deputy treasurer, and a continuation of the bonds as follows. Treasurer $100,000, deputy treasurer $100,000. Carmel High School ECA treasurer $50,000. Each middle school ECA treasurer $20,000. Each elementary school treasurer $10,000. Each cafeteria cashier and the Educational Service Center ECA treasurer each $10,000. All those in favor of supporting the motion signify by saying "aye" and raising your hand.
"Aye."
"Aye." Motion carries. Let the record show. Five approved. Motion carries. Our next appointment is the appointment of general counsel. Dr. Dudley.
Each year, it is necessary for the board to appoint a general counsel on or before January 15th. The administration recommends appointing Mr. David Day as general counsel.
Thank you. May I get a motion to approve? Second? Discussion?
I guess I just think we need to acknowledge that David Day is with us this evening. I don't know if he wants to make any remarks, or do you want, nope? Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Seeing that we have no other items to discuss, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of supporting Mr. David Day as general counsel for Carmel Clay Schools for the 2021 year, please signify by saying "aye" and raising your hand.
"Aye."
Motion carries, five-zero. Thank you very much. And Mr. David Day, thank you very much for continuing your service. We have been very fortunate to have found you, and we are very thankful that you continue to serve us in the way in which you, you and your company does. Yes, please. Thank you. Welcome to the meeting, Jessica. Sorry for my, had to write down a name there. Okay, next on our appointments, we have the appointment of our executive secretary. Dr. Dudley.
Each year, it is necessary for the board to appoint an executive secretary on or before January 15th to perform secretarial duties as required by the School Board of Trustees. The administration recommends appointing Mrs. Colleen Nobis as executive secretary.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dudley. May I get a motion? Thank you, Pam. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion? Yes.
I would just like to, I'm sure you were going to say this already, publicly thank Mrs. Nobis for everything she does for us. She is, somebody said earlier this morning, said, earlier this evening, said she's the Mary Poppins of our, our board and gets everything smoothly. So thank you for everything you do, Colleen.
Thank you. Any other items to discuss? Well, thank you very much. Seeing the no other discussion, we will go ahead and take a vote. The administration recommends appointing Ms. Colleen Nobis as our executive secretary. Please signify by saying "aye" and raising your hand if you approve.
"Aye."
"Aye." Thank you. Five-zero. Motion carries. And yes, Colleen, we are very, very thankful to have you working with us as well. And as, you know, the administrative assistant to Dr. Beresford, we also are thrilled that you are our administrative assistant as well. You keep us on our toes and take care of, you know, crossing every team, dotting every i, so thank you. Next on our appointments, we have the cable television representative. Dr. Dudley.
Each year, the board traditionally appoints a cable television representative during the organizational meeting on or before January 15th. The administration recommends appointing Mrs. Christy Cloud as the cable television representative.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. May I get a motion on the table? Thank you, Pam. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Discussion? Thank you. Seeing no discussion, we'll go ahead and take a vote. The administration recommends the appointment of Ms. Christy Cloud as our cable television representative. Signify by saying "aye" if you approve.
"Aye."
Motion carries, five-zero. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, we've got the appointment of School Board Association delegate and Indiana School Board Association legislative liaison. Dr. Dudley.
Each year, it is necessary for the board to appoint a board member to serve as an Indiana School Boards Association delegate and legislative liaison on or before January 15th. It is recommended that the board appoint Mrs. Leila Spanenberg as the Indiana School Boards Association delegate and the Indiana School Boards Association legislative liaison.
Thank you. May I get a motion on the table?
Still moved.
Thank you, Mike. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Discussion? Yes, Mrs. Nalls?
Yes. I would like to make an amendment to this moot, to this motion, please. And I don't think this is necessary to do by January 15th by law. So I don't know that that, anyway. My motion would be, I move that Leila Spanenberg continue as legislative liaison until the board meeting in July, at which time we will appoint a representative to serve for a July-July term instead of January-to-January.
Thank you very much, Pam. We have an amendment on the table. May I have a motion to approve the amendment? Still moved. A second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. I would like to see this appointment made at our meeting in, in July instead of January. I think that this appointment has been misplaced, and these are my thoughts or reasons. The appointment is based on the need for a delegate at the ISBA Fall Conference, for one. We base our legislative priorities and our letter for the ISBA, for the legislators, and we base it on the ISBA legislative priorities, which we approve at the Fall Conference, which is usually in September or October. Then the board discusses those priorities and makes the decision as to what we are going to have as our priorities at a regular meeting following the conference. At that time, our legislative liaison composes our letter, which will go out to legislators and presents it to the board for approval. Then Dr. Beresford and our legislative liaison begin meeting with legislators. The session begins in January, and our legislative liaison continues meeting with legislators throughout the session, reaffirming talks already had and addressing new concerns. After the session, our legislative liaison thanks legislators for their hard work, and we hope for legislation benefiting education. I think the appointment of legislative liaison should be one for a full year, but that appointing a new one in January seems counterproductive to the relationships that they've already established in the fall.
Any other discussion? Yes, Katie.
I just want to echo the part, one of the biggest things about having that legislative liaison is forming of those relationships. And I do think in the potential of a switch in the middle of what could be a session could definitely be disruptive and kind of maybe take a step back from all the hard work that's already been done. So I do think that this is a positive idea.
Serving in this role, I would agree. And like Katie had said, the relationship is really crucial. Not only do we have our priorities, but we also work directly with the legislators to provide them feedback and information about some of the new legislation that they're considering. Today, I had an opportunity to, to meet with Senator Baldwin, and it was all based on information that we have had, we've been discussing from last fall. And it, it is very helpful to continue in that role. January to January's been fine, but it is, I think there are benefits to switching it to a July-to-July term. Any other comments? Yes, Mike.
I think you're right, Pam, that it is not a statutory appointment, so we're not bound by the January 15th deadline. But we have appointed one by January 15th anyways, so.
Okay. So we have an amendment on the table. The amendment is that Leila will serve, will continue her position as legislative liaison until the board meeting in July, I'm including 2021, at which time we will reappoint a representative to serve a July-to-July term instead of a January-to-January term. All those in favor of supporting the amendment signify by saying "aye" and raising your hand.
"Aye."
Amendment carries, five-zero. Quick question, Mike.
I don't think we need to, I don't think you need to do it over again because we just took care of it, right?
Well, that's my thought, but.
Yeah, I mean, you were going to ask if it needed to be, if we need to vote on the recommendation.
Right.
I think we already voted.
And I'm getting a nod from general counsel. Thanks, David. Yes. Thank you. And I'm excited to continue in that role. Next on our agenda, we have the appointment of our Carmel Clay Parks representative. Dr. Dudley.
Each year, it is necessary for the board to appoint a board member to the Carmel Clay Parks Board. It is recommended that Mrs. Louise Jackson be appointed as the Carmel Clay Parks Board representative.
Thank you. May I get a motion on the table? Thank you, Pam.
Second.
Thank you very much, Katie. Discussion? Yes. Katie.
I just kind of wanted to talk briefly of the importance of this role. I think this is great. Carmel Clay Parks and Recreation serves our after and before, prior to COVID or before school care. And it is such an important role for us to have a representative who, as they meet in our buildings, to be able to represent that and to be able to talk about things and to discuss things and vote on items that could affect not only our buildings, but also our student populations. I also think as we are in the business of families, that a lot of things that affect our parks can also affect our families. So I appreciate the fact that Carmel Clay Schools has a representative on the Parks Board, and I know they also very much so value our service.
Thank you, Katie. Any other discussion items? Seeing no other further discussion, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of supporting Mrs. Louise Jackson to be appointed as our Carmel Clay School Board representative, signify by saying "aye" and raising your hand.
"Aye."
Motion carries, five-zero. Congratulations. Next on our agenda, we have the Carmel Redevelopment Commission representative. Dr. Dudley.
Each year, the board traditionally identifies a Carmel Redevelopment Commission representative during the organizational meeting. It is recommended that the board identify Mr. Michael Kirschner as the Carmel Redevelopment Commission representative.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dudley. May I get a motion on the table? Thank you, Pam. Second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Katie. Discussion? Yes, Katie.
Again, I just wanted to kind of talk about this one. Carmel redevelopment is one of the things that a lot of our tax dollars go to as far as TIFs. Although Carmel Clay Schools does not receive any TIF funding, it is nice that we all have a representative, again, according to property that we own. Carmel Clay School members on this do not get a vote. And I know that that has been something that's been discussed before, but that has not been something that we as a board have really kind of pursued individually. As I'm coming off of a two-year term on that, I know that they are very excited for the return of the famous Mr. Kirschner. So I'm looking forward to some of the things and what, that, in the part that you'll be able to represent us on, so thank you.
Other discussion items? Great. We'll go ahead and take a vote then. All those in favor, please signify by saying, actually, all those in favor of supporting Mr. Mike Kirschner as a Carmel Redevelopment Commissioner, or Commission representative, please signify by saying "aye" and raising your hand.
"Aye."
Motion carries, five-zero. Congratulations, Mike. Thank you very much for serving. Next on the agenda, we have the establishment of salaries for board members. Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. Each year, the board traditionally establishes salaries of school board members during its organizational meeting. It is recommended that the school board salaries remain at $2,000 per year per statute.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dudley. There's a motion on the table, or may I get a motion? To approve school board salaries at $2,000 per year per statute, Indiana Code 2025-3-3. Thank you, Pam. A second?
Second.
Mike?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschner. Discussion? Well, then, we'll just go ahead with the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye" and raising your hand.
"Aye."
Thank you. Motion carries, five-zero. Next on our agenda, we have consent. And in consent this evening, we have a number of different items. We have claims, payroll, our personnel report, our carryforward of capital project accounts. We also have the authorization to sign agreements for alternative services in private residential school placements, as well as our minutes for our regular session on November 23rd of 2020. May I get a motion to approve consent? Thank you, Pam. Second? Fantastic. Thank you very much, Louise. Discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of supporting consent, please signify by saying "aye" and raising your hand.
"Aye."
Motion carries, five-zero. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, we have the Board of Finance. At this time, I will ask or request, let me take a look here, request to suspend our current meeting for the Carmel Clay School Board of Trustees for convening the Carmel Clay School Board of Finance. May I get a motion? Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor of suspending our Carmel Clay School Board of Trustees meeting for the purpose of convening the Carmel Clay School Board of Finance meeting, please signify by saying "aye" and raising your hand.
"Aye."
Thank you. Motion carries. We will begin our Board of Finance. Mr. McMichael, would you provide and do note that it is eight, or I'm sorry, 7:40, that we are beyond the 7:15 required time that we'd established for the meeting? Mr. McMichael, would you provide the board with some background information regarding the Board of Finance, please?
Yes. Each year, it's necessary for the Board of School Trustees to organize as a Board of Finance and conduct the following business. Select a president and a secretary. Review the report of investments. Review investment policy. Review the financial condition of the school district. And review the list of outstanding checks to void. So that's the purpose of this meeting. So I believe you would start by electing your officers.
Okay, Mr. McMichael. Thank you very much. The first action for the Board of Finance is to appoint a president and a secretary for the Board of Finance. The administration? Do you want to make a recommendation, Mr. McMichael?
Yes, we would recommend that you, that the board consider appointing your president of the board and secretary of the board also as president and secretary of the Board of Finance.
Thank you very much. The administration is recommending the president and secretary of the school board also serve as the president and secretary of the Board of Finance. May I have a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschner. May I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Nalls. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll take. Seeing no discussion, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of supporting the Administration's recommendation of the President and Secretary of the School Board serving as a President and Secretary of the Board of Finance, signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Next, Mr. McMichael, will you present to the Board a report of the investments for 2020?
Yes, this year, the district earned $49,596.50 from investments. I'll share with you that in years past, there was a time where that was $1.5 million. Our investment earnings are not what they used to be. The interest rates primarily the result of that. And you can see from the report that our high rate of return was .25%, and the low was .01%, and the average was .11%.
Thank you very much. It is also necessary for the Board of Finance to receive a list of any outstanding checks to void as of December 31 of 2020. Mr. McMichael, would you like to make any comments?
Just that this year, there are no outstanding checks as of December 31, 2020.
Thank you. And Roger, will you present a report on the financial condition of the school district?
Yes, just take me a second to get this pulled up.
I have a question, Ms.
Yes, please, I'm so sorry.
No problem. Roger, this is my annual question, too, and we say there's no outstanding checks. That doesn't mean there's no outstanding checks. It means that there's some for a certain period of time.
Yes, two years. So there's no, there's no checks to void at this point.
So there's no checks that have been outstanding for two years?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, so during the 2019 Legislative Section, the State Senate actually added a new requirement for school corporations pertaining to the school corporation's fiscal indicators provided by the Distressed Unit Appeal Board, referred to as DOAB. During the corporation's annual Board of Finance meeting, the Superintendent or Superintendent's designee must submit a written report to the Board of Finance that assesses the financial condition of the school corporation using the indicators. The Board of Finance shall review the submitted report, and the information I'm about to present to you includes the fiscal indicators, which are provided by the Distressed Unit Appeal Board. So I'll begin by noting that the 2020-21 student count or our average daily membership was 16,306 students. The exhibit below provides the free and reduced lunch, percentage, spatial education, and English language learners for the years 2012 through 2020. You can see that we've been fairly stable in 2020, although our English language learners over the years has increased to the current high of 4.4%. This chart shows the average daily membership from 2012 to 2021, and I would note that the ADM has increased 8.2% in the past 10 years, but only 2.3% in the past five, so we know that our growth is slowing down. This year, we actually declined 200 students. We believe, at least in part, that has to do with the COVID situation, but I'd also point out that last year, in 2020, we increased 300 students, which was about 200 students more than was projected or forecast from our demographic. Exhibit three represents the combined fund balance for what was a general fund, now the Education Fund and the Operating Referendum Fund. The Education Fund replaced the General Fund in 2019. Prior to 2017, the fund balance is not very, it can be a bit misleading because it was impacted by untimely contract settlements, which then resulted in retroactive pay. So we had a period of some instability as it relates to contracts, and that's affecting this chart. But you can see since 2017, the balance has remained fairly constant. Our goal is to have a minimum of an 8% cash balance, and you'll see on the second slide that this is the same information presented as a percentage, and so we came up, as we anticipated in 2019, to 8.5%. And again, that's, as I typically present this information, that's the combination of what currently is the Education Fund and the Operating Referendum Fund. I want to take a minute to show a slide on the Operating Referendum. We know that that provides enormous support for our educational program, and in 2019, it was 16% of the total revenue for the Education and the Operation Funds. You can see that graphically here, or in dollars, our referendum fund is right at $20 million. So in summary, the district has maintained financial stability over this period of time. Our average cash balance for our General Fund and now Education Fund, and as well as the Operating Fund, or Referendum Fund, is, the average has been 9.6%. So that concludes the report.
Thank you very much, Mr. McMichael. Are there questions for Mr. McMichael at this time? Yes, Pam?
Yes, thank you for adding the total referend, total budget underneath the slides. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I noticed, since you added that, that our budget increased from 12 to 18, and then in 19, it went down. I'm not sure what it is in 20, because it's not listed, but is this at all due to the fact that we are getting less from the state, or is this just the way we have put the budget together?
It's the way we put the budgets together. The first year of the Education Fund, you may recall that the Education Fund was more restrictive in its use than the prior General Fund, and so there were certain expenses that could not be made out of the Education Fund, and so the first year of that fund, we transferred expenses and revenue to the Operating Fund. And then in the second year, we considered that we could, since we happened to have a local Operating Referendum Fund, that we could move those expenses previously paid from the General Fund over to the Operating Fund and just avoid the whole administrative process of doing the transfer, and so that, but that had the impact of lowering the Education Fund.
Thank you. I think that was necessary for people to hear.
Yes.
That happened to the Education Fund, the difference between the General Fund and the Education Fund.
Yes, that's, I'm glad you brought that up.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Roger at this time? Well, then, seeing that there's no other business for the Board of Finance, may I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you. Second? A second? Did Katie, did you? Okay, thank you. Motion made and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of adjourning the Board of Finance meeting for 2021, signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Thank you. Motion carries five zero. At this time, we'll reconvene the meeting of the Carmel Clay School Board of Trustees. And with that, Mr. McMichael, we turn to you for the permission to advertise for the public hearing on additional appropriations.
Yes, thank you. At the July 27, 2020 meeting of the Board, the Board declared its official intent to issue bonds for a 2021-2023 facility project. The first bonds that we're proposing to issue will be general obligation bond, Series 2021, in the amount of $20,100,000. So it's necessary to appropriate the proceeds of these bonds in order to have approval to expend the funds. The additional appropriation public hearing provides for public input, and you have an attached resolution detailing the project and, as well as the expenses from this general obligation bond.
Thank you. May I get a motion on the table to advertise for public hearing to be held on January 25 of 2021 on the additional appropriation of $20,100,000 out of the proceeds to the general obligation bond, Series 2021? Second? Thank you. Pam? Motion? Katie, second? Okay. Discussion? Yes. Mr. Kirschner?
Roger, I know we've got the notice that lists half a page of things, and I know we discussed it in July. Can you just give us maybe the five biggest dollar-wise of those?
And are you referring to the items coming just from the general obligation bond or the overall project?
I just think the biggest projects, I mean, that's.
Yeah, so the largest, this total project is a budgeted at $107 million. So this general obligation, we anticipate selling two general obligation bonds and then one lease rental bond with two series. And so in total, the larger projects consist of renovation and addition of the performing arts area, which is about $25 million. And we're, we've started that now, not the, not the construction part, but we're in design and so forth. Another project is the addition of a second natatorium or pool, and that comes in the second year. And then there's a complete renovation of the stadium area, including construction of a concession stand and restrooms at the south end of the field, and that will also become the new entry into the complex. There's a project, that's in the second year, and a third year, there's a project for the baseball complex, and then there's a smaller project for the soccer complex. So a number of these are athletic or physical education-related this time. The performing arts, as I said, is one of the first of the large projects that we're doing.
Well, thank you. I think that was helpful, and it was also helpful to remember that this is just one piece of.
Yes.
The bigger puzzle. Thank you.
Mrs. Knowles?
Yes, I realize the resolution is a resolution, but at some point, can we see a list of the projects so that it's much easier to take, to follow as you continue to work on these projects?
Yes, as a matter of fact, when this project was presented, it was, of course, presented item by item and year by year, and so as we get into the projects, we will be giving periodic updates, so, and then we'll also show the, you know, all the projects and where we're at on each one of them.
Okay.
And anticipate doing that probably twice a year.
Thank you very much. Roger, I'd like to clarify what you just said. So when we presented, so are you, July 27 of 2020, at that particular meeting, because I did not go back and look at the minutes from that meeting, do we have how we're spending the $107 million?
I'm sorry.
Are all of the projects listed from that July meeting, July of 2020?
Do we have all the projects listed?
Right.
I believe it was in a format similar to this.
Okay.
So it's more of a narrative where, when I presented these projects initially for the Board to consider, they were broken out by year and a little more detail than what's here.
Okay, I will go back and.
Yeah.
Pull those notes. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Roger at this time? Thank you. Seeing that we have no other questions, we'll now take a vote to approve the recommendation to advertise for public hearing to be held on January 25 of 2021 on the additional appropriations for the. Right, the general obligation bond, Series 2021. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have updates, including reports, and for reports, I believe we're turning to Dr. Osterich.
Good evening, President Spanenberg and members of the Board. I'm excited to share the Superintendent's update on behalf of Dr. Bearsford this evening, and I'd like to start with a Policy Committee appointment. And so Dr. Bearsford would like to report as a matter of record that he has appointed CCS Board Vice President Katie Browning to join previously appointed CCS Board Secretary Pam Knowles and Assistant Superintendent Dr. Amy Dudley to the Policy Committee. Dr. Dudley will continue as the Coordinator of the Committee. Dr. Bearsford would like to thank the Policy Committee members and for all of their hard work to keep our policies up to date. Thank you. Dr. Bearsford, once again, would also like to welcome our newest School Board Member, Mrs. Louise Jackson. We are thrilled to welcome her to our CCS School Board, and Louise brings insights and perspective as a business leader, human resource professional, and parent of CCS students. She has been active in our schools and an advocate for education. Welcome, Louise. We also like to congratulate Sam, one of our students here at CCS. We announced at the last board meeting, first place of the Congressional App winner last round, but we learned last week that another CCS student also came in second. So here is a shout out to Carmel Middle School student Sam Vertismarsh, and Sam created a throwback video game app that allowed the player to zap the COVID-19 virus. I do that every single day here in Carmel Clay Schools. I know that Dr. Bearsford and many others from our office had fun checking out Sam's game and watching COVID-19 get zapped, so congratulations to Sam. I also had the opportunity last week to celebrate one of our elementary students from Smokey Row who completed the 40-book challenge. He read several different genres to complete the challenge, so congratulations to Miller for completing this awesome accomplishment, as well as all the students in Mrs. Supergan's class at Smokey Row who've met this challenge and those who that will continue to meet the 40-book challenge. In addition, congratulations to Town Meadow Music Teacher Andy Heimlich. He was named the 2021 Outstanding Music Educator by the Indiana Music Education Association. This is extremely well-deserved, if you know Andy, and well-earned, so congratulations, Andy Heimlich. And now for a sports update for all of you, the Carmel Clay Schools, or the Carmel High School Boys Basketball Team remains undefeated at 10-0 after a tough win in overtime against Center Grove and defeating previously undefeated Westfield this weekend. In addition, our Boys and Girls Swim Team swept the Mick Championships with four records set by the Boys Team. Wrestling also had four individual champions at the Mick Championships last weekend, and two of our girls wrestlers qualified at Regionals last Friday, and they are headed to state this Friday. So congratulations to all of our Carmel High School student athletes. And speaking of our Carmel High School student athletes, we have too many to mention, but congratulations to all of them who are signing and accepting offers to attend and compete at colleges all around the country. Every week, we see posts of our students ready to go to that next level and find their futures. Congratulations to those future Greyhounds that'll be competing at the collegiate level. I do have a COVID-19 update for the Board this evening, and before, I'd like to do that before moving to our exciting bell ringer this evening. So with our COVID-19 update, as you may be aware, Hamilton County moved to the red level across the state. Our learning programs are compliant with these recommendations, so there's no change to our day-to-day operations. However, numbers both in positive cases and quarantines are continuing to increase. We are asking for a renewed dedication to review the screener questions that can be found on our website before sending your child to school. And please, if your family is waiting on a COVID test result, do not send your child to school, and for staff, do not report to work. Furthermore, if you are symptomatic or your child is symptomatic, please do not come to school and call the COVID hotline at 317-571-4630. We are all working tirelessly on behalf of our students and our staff regarding COVID-19. We work extremely closely with the Hamilton County Health Department, as well as the Indiana State Department of Health to keep our students and our staff safe at school. And finally, the bell ringer for this evening. This is School Board Appreciation Week this week here in CCS and all across the country. Tonight's bell ringer is dedicated to the Carmel Clay Schools Board of Schools Trustees in appreciation for all that you do for the students and the families that we serve. This year, like many others, required you to dedicate many hours to gather information and data, to ask the hard questions, and make very tough decisions. You also spent countless hours in developing policy to structure our district, guide our district, and comply with Indiana and federal code. This has been a very difficult year for everyone, but your support and leadership through this challenging season has been exemplary. We are very fortunate to have five individuals serve on our school board to give voice to our community in decision-making, vision, and policymaking. Most importantly, we have five individuals who keep students at the center of every decision and who truly lead by adhering to the CCS guiding principles. Thank you for your service to our students, staff, family, and community. And it's not just us who has recognized your work. The Indiana School Boards Association has awarded you the Exemplary Governance Award. Congratulations.
And I'm going to come up and present the award to.
Well, on behalf of the board, actually not on behalf of the board. I think everybody will have an opportunity to say their thank you. But as for this, we're not sure how we received it. We are thrilled and thankful, and we are very excited. So I kind of think somebody turned in points for us, perhaps Colleen did. So, no?
The, the award is based on a number of factors. However, your engagement, attending professional development, among other things, are considered to be awarded an exemplary board. And it really takes all of you to achieve that honor. So once again, congratulations.
Well, congratulations, team. And we'll need to let Lynn know because she is recognized on there as well. I want to say thank you very much to, to our board and to our community. We are very fortunate to have the unique opportunity to serve our community on the board. I know each of us take this very seriously. It's a very meaningful and rewarding position. And I, well, I feel very blessed to have that opportunity. And I feel even, you know, I'm very grateful for those that we work with because we have an amazing team of administrators, professional educators, administrative assistants. We just have everybody who works so well together as a team. And we're just thankful that Dr. Bearsford is at the helm and helps bring us all together. And I will allow everybody on the board an opportunity to share their thoughts. So.
We'll work our way to, okay, we'll start this way. Louise?
Mine's very brief. I'm saying thank you on behalf of Lynn.
I just kind of want to acknowledge, it's so wonderful to be able to serve with my fellow board members. I'm thrilled, Louise, for you to be joining us. This really is a team effort. We have to work together in order to be successful. And I'm so honored for the last four years to be able to do that and for the next four to be able to work with people who really care about our students and our staff. So thank you for all of your hard work, and I'm looking forward again to working with you.
I will just say ditto, ditto, ditto. Thank you.
Pam, ditto? Go ahead.
Yeah, yes, I wasn't prepared to do this.
Well, I wasn't really.
Yes, I just want to say, having been part of this school system for many years, that it is an honor to continue to serve this district and to ensure that the students in this district receive the best education that they can possibly get. And we have so many dedicated personnel in this district who also ensure that that happens. And it has been rewarding to work with all of you over there and Dr. Bearsford and to continue to work with the board. And we work as a team. And we have found that this board is exemplary in doing that. And I think we can continue to do that for the next couple of years at least. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, we've summed up most of the information we needed to share with everyone tonight. I do want to share a few announcements. This Wednesday is late start, so for all of you who enjoy getting up a little later, students, yay, cheering. I see some cheers out there. Monday, the 18th, in recognition of Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday, there is no school. We do have our CCS Advanced Meeting on the 21st. And here in the PMR, we have our next board meeting on the 25th with official pictures prior to the meeting. Pam? And here in no further business, may I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second?
Second. Second?
Oh, oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned 8:09? Thank you.